Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. It's a special board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The time is 5:32 PM. Roll call.
Trustee Benz. Benz here. Trustee Atis.
Present.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, present.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present. We have a call 5-0. Moving on to 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. At this moment, I would like to take a moment of silence for the passing of one of our own, Daniela Glaze, office clerk at Teddick. Thank you. It is with great sadness to inform you of the passing of Ms. Daniela Glaze. Ms. Glaze passed away on Saturday, October 30th, 2021. She served our community for 24 years. She was first hired on October 7th, 1997, as a school proctor at Eagle Ranch Elementary School. During her 24 years in the district, Daniela worked as a school clerk at Eagle Ranch Elementary School, Desert Trails Elementary School, Mesa Linda Middle School, and Teddick Elementary. She worked at Teddick Elementary for the past 11 years. Daniela leave behind her husband, Randy Glaze, daughters, Kalina Chavez, Kimberly Johnson, son Leo, and LJ Glaze. The Glaze family has expressed their gratitude for the love, prayers, and donations they have received and feel blessed for the overwhelming support from everyone. So on behalf of all of the trustees in the district community, I want to express our sincere condolences to the Glaze family. Please keep them in your prayers and your thoughts during this difficult time. As we get more information, we will update you with the celebration of life and services for our staff, and we'll send that information out. Thank you. Moving on to Section 2, Adoption of the Agenda. 2.01, Proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in order of business. Mrs. Savaire, any?
Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. 2.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Atis, my motion.
I have a motion by trustee Atis. Is there a second?
Benz, I second.
And a second by trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing that, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I. Trustee Atis.
I.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I.
And trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed 5-0. Moving on to Section 3, Public Testimony. A public comment period is administered by state law and is appointed a meeting set aside for the members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is a top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District, consistent with shelter-in-place orders from the governor as San Bernardino County Board members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor Executive Order AB 361, which will provide local legislative bodies with the continued flexibility to meet remotely without adhering to All Brown Act teleconference rules during a proclaimed state of emergency, but the following key limitations, but with the following key limitations. One, public comment must be allowed in real time. And if there are technological issues, the meeting must be stopped, and no vote or other official actions can be taken until the public can once again participate in the proceedings. Any persons who wish to address the governing board on open session agenda items must completely submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during public comment. Once that part of the meeting is over, the comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values the public comment, and although we cannot take actions or discuss actions not on the agenda, we can listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. A public speaker can be cut off for exceeding allotted time or for willingly causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you are cut off or warned, the last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each item, each agenda item. The board limits the total period of input to 20 minutes, but I have extended that time because of the questions that the public have regarding the mandates. So we have extended that time to one hour. With the board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for against a particular issue, and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any requests from the public?
Yes, trustee Turner, the board would like to welcome the net Kadili, president of ADTA, speaking for ADTA.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go with ADTA first?
Yes, remember, we just determined.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Kadili, thank you.
Hi, hold on. Let me turn this on. I'm sorry, I didn't know I was speaking right now. I thought it was open session.
It is.
Is it okay to speak? Oh, it is. Okay, sorry. And every time like this late, it's like I'm always orange. I look like an Oompa Loompa. I don't know what's going on. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I first want to say our condolences. ADTA sends our condolences to the Glaze family. She was loved by those who knew her and worked closely with her. She will be missed. Last time I spoke, I did speak about the group of teachers at the last board meeting who do not believe in the COVID vaccination mandates, and they believe that it's unethical to force them to have the vaccination. And today I want to speak about the other side and the teachers who have opinions about the other side. We might have teachers that come on tonight, I'm not sure. But I've been contacted by teachers who have also given me information that parents are also speaking out. And you know, the whole student vaccination stuff, that's like another whole other issue and argument there. But we do have some concerned parents who are looking, you know, in the future of students that have to be vaccinated. And many parents, along with the other side, who also, many parents don't believe, they don't want to get their students vaccinated. But as well, some parents are also concerned that they will be sending their child to school with students that are not vaccinated. So, you know, we have both sides, and it's the same with our teachers and our ADTA members that aren't teachers, who fill the opposite of that, working with coworkers who are unvaccinated or who are unwilling to test. You know, they're very nervous about that as well. And so I just wanted to, you know, focus on or put it out there that we have a divided group, and we have both sides. And I would like the trustees to think about, because I think that, I feel that what I've heard from you all this time is that you do believe in choice. And right now, we have a choice to, whether, whatever the opinion is out there, we do have a choice right now to vaccinate or to get tested. And so at some point, there may be a time in the near future where we won't have that choice, and it'll come down that we're either vaccinated or we don't have a job. And so at that time, I would like for the trustees to think about, you know, then possibly putting out a resolution that says, you know, we still believe in choice, and that would be to vaccinate or test. And that's, you know, things can change. Things can change over time. It may not come down to that, but it looks like it's going to. And that's what I stand for, is choice. And we have the choice right now. I'm good with that, and I hope that that continues. So I just wanted to put that out there. And that was about all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for letting me speak on that behalf.
Thank you, Mrs. Kadili. Do we have a representative from CSEA who would like to address the board?
Madam President.
Okay.
So, Madam President, the next group of speakers that I'm going to bring up are not speaking on the one topic, so these are random miscellaneous topics. And so the board welcomes Angelique Jolly. You may unmute yourself. Thank you. Mike, do you see this Jolly on?
I don't see an Angelique Jolly. I do see an Angie.
See if that works. Are you able to unmute her?
I have asked her to unmute.
Okay, we'll come back to her if she comes back.
My name is Madam Angelique. I'm sorry, it's probably another person.
Okay, thank you. We'll thank you. The board welcomes Sonia Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak and voice my concerns. I'm not sure if our board was aware that we had an extraordinary amount of parents who kept their children home from school on Monday, October 18th, as a way to protest against the vaccine mandate. If the board was in fact aware of this, then that deeply concerns me because being an attendance clerk, I was never asked by the district how many students were absent. And if it was due to this protest, was this because the board and district were unaware or because no one cared? Sorry, I wonder if our board members in our district are aware that there have been social media posts about another protest scheduled for this month on Monday, the 15th. Another concern I'd like to speak on is that at the last board meeting, we were told by a certain board member that their decisions are not made based off of her personal beliefs, but they are made in the benefit of everyone in the district. And then in the very next breath, we were given a personal belief, a personal belief that compared our unvaccinated staff and parents who choose not to have their children injected with the COVID vaccine to a person who drinks a case of beer and gets behind the wheel of a car. That was a very unfair and insulting comparison. The Board of Trustees for the Victor Elementary School District produced a letter that is being presented to Governor Gavin Newsom that informs him that parents and staff have expressed their disappointment in the possibility of having to leave their schools and professions. They are requesting that unvaccinated staff and students be given the option for weekly testing. The letter also states that they are proud of the work VESD is doing, and they do not want to lose any of their staff or students. Why hasn't our Board of Trustees done the same for us? I honestly feel that our staff, parents, and students are not valued by our district. If I'm wrong, then please show me different by standing up for us as Victor Elementary School District is doing for their staff, students, and parents. We began this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance that ends in saying with liberty and justice for all. The definition of liberty is power or right of doing, thinking, speaking, etc., according to choice. Once again, according to choice. I'd like to leave you with one last thought, and I really do hope that you all think about this. It is not the job of the unvaccinated to protect the vaccinated. That's supposed to be the job of the vaccine, if the vaccine works. And if the vaccine works, then those who are vaccinated should have nothing to worry about. So why not allow parents and employees to make their own choices? Please allow us to keep our liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hernandez. Dr. Mitchell?
The board welcomes, I'm sorry, the board welcomes Monica Cooper. You may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, I don't see Monica Cooper here.
We'll come back to Ms. Cooper. Okay.
Thank you. The board welcomes Jennifer Rader. Ms. Rader, you may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. The bestselling book Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey has been adopted by our superintendent as kind of a doctrine, being quoted and discussed at the start of every meeting. He has instructed our principals to begin each staff meeting reviewing the 13 behaviors of the speed of trust. These 13 behaviors together create a working model of an effective organization. I have to wonder if you begin your meetings the same way. Honestly, with this school board, anything entitled trust is a joke. Let's begin with creating transparency. Covey's number three, speed of trust behavior. Governor Newsom's shelter-in-place order expired months ago when every other district began to have board meetings in public. Yet you remain shuttered and persistent quoting Newsom's shelter-in-place order at the beginning of every meeting, even this one. You all have been to conferences together in recent months. Why not be together in the boardroom? Public places have either set chairs three feet apart or have demarcated every third seat to ensure for separation. So why not invite the public back into the boardroom? There has never been transparency with this board. The agenda set forth by Turner has made input by parents all but impossible. Luckily, we have some very determined parents. This board does not demonstrate respect. That is behavior number two. Not within your own ranks, not with the teachers, and certainly not with the parents. Else you wouldn't have kept 210 participants waiting more than three hours at the last board meeting. Number 12 behavior is keeping commitments. The board voted and approved that onsite COVID testing would occur even before we returned to school this year. Now teachers are testing offsite on their own. Those are only a few ways that you, the board, have let us down. In summary, you have forgotten that you have been elected to represent our community. You were not crowned queens of the area. The community who elected you, the parents, can just as easily withdraw their support and for the sounds of things they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rader. Dr. Mitchell? You're muted. Okay, there you go.
All about that. The board welcomes Tamara Smith. Ms. Smith, you may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to turn my video. Sorry, thank you. Um, I have a very different view. I have been seeing what's been going on in our communities surrounding school districts, and it's been very volatile and very toxic in many ways. And I have to say that I am so proud to be an Adelanto teacher, and I'm so proud of our board. And President Turner, again, made it very clear. I'm so proud that I know that our board is going to do what's right to keep our students and staff safe. Not everyone is going to be pleased with every decision, but again, with most situations, not everybody is able to be. But I know that we may not do things the way other districts do. We're going to do things the Adelanto way. But I have faith in our board that we will, you know, do what it takes to keep our children safe. Again, unfortunately, there's been a lot of political misinformation, things mixed in, and people are coming at their views on this from, you know, they've gotten misinformation and different stances. And I just think that we all need to just stop, take a deep breath, go back and look at the information, and know that our district would never purposely do anything to harm anyone. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I just wanted to share that, that I do again. I feel good knowing where we are, and choice is good, you know? I think it is really, it's been very positive that that choice has been allowed, as this is right now. But I'd also like to say that as a science teacher, I would be more than happy to be willing to maybe we could come up with a forum for parents to come ask questions, you know, give information. Again, I know everything's really heated right now, but eventually cooler heads will prevail, you know? So I just wanted to put that out there. I would be more than happy, anyone reach out to me, you know, information, go through things with them. I would really be willing to do that. Again, so I just, I know we're going to be going into much more difficult times right now. But I just wanted to share my thoughts again. And again, I'm very proud to work in this district, and I'm very proud of our district leadership. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, the board welcomes Melanie Cabin. Ms. Cabin, you may unmute yourself. Thank you. Mike, do you see a cabin?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. Sorry. Thank you.
So I too like Tamara. Tamara, I'm very proud to work in Adelanto School District, not because of the administrative leadership, but because of the children that we serve, the children that I serve on a daily basis. I'm proud to work with them and help them every day. I want to reiterate what Jennifer Rader said. Every district in our surrounding area is back in person. I don't see why our district cannot offer both. If you would like to offer the choice, offer in-person board meetings and Zoom. That's not an issue in this day, in this time of technology. The shelter-in-place has long since gone. So I don't understand why we're not affording the opportunity to parents to voice their opinions, to see you face-to-face, and to discuss these matters with you. I just think it's not, it doesn't make any sense. And people ask me all the time, as a teacher of Adelanto School District, why is your district not holding in-person board meetings? And I can't give a rational, reasonable answer, other than they don't want it. And so I wish that this board would make the decision to give the choice, both in-person and on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cabin. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you. I'd like to swing back around just to make sure to see if others are going. Ms. Angelique Jolly, again, if you're on, we welcome you to speak. Mike, do you see Jolly?
I do not see Jolly.
Well, I do see Monica now, yes. Monica Cooper, you may. If you're on, you may unmute yourself.
We'll come back to Ms. Jolly before we get done.
Ms. Cooper?
I, thank you. First of all, sorry about that. I'm trying to get my, there I go. Hi, I wanted to thank the opportunity to speak. My name is Monica Cooper. I've spoken before. I wanted to also thank Ms. Turner and our Ms. LaFrench last board meeting for holding their ground and being open to listening about what mandates and the importance of mandates. As I've shared before, my husband has just celebrated October 12th. His, he had a transplant, so he's immunocompromised. And I've been waiting for the blessing of having the COVID vaccine. He just recently got his booster. I am a firm believer that we have to love our neighbors, and I think a mandate in place is giving teachers, actually with Adelanto School District, the choice of either having the vaccination or getting weekly tested. And I've shared this with other friends of ours in my circle of the teachers having that choice. And they're actually pretty surprised that teachers are given the choice and that they also have the choice of getting the weekly testing and also giving the opportunity, not only vaccinated, unvaccinated, the opportunity to get tested and be compensated for their time. Like I said, I think this is something of our community. We're not only protecting ourselves, we're protecting others around us. Many of our children don't have the opportunity right now to get vaccinated. So with the mandates in place, I feel safe. I feel like I can, you know, be in an environment with other educators that are vaccinated and that I will not bring something home or as far as COVID or have another person in my family be exposed or even my neighbor, the person next to me, or the child in my classroom. So, again, I was kind of not really prepared, but I just wanted to give my, you just see that there is another point of view that teachers do support what the district has in place, and I am fully in support of it. And my husband actually is, but he's on the side, and he said, you know, we really have to speak from our heart, and my heart's telling me that this is the right thing to do. And just thank you. And Christina Turner and Ms. LaFrench, I do thank you so much for listening and for hearing the other side and not making a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, Madam President, we're going to move into people, folks, speaking on a single topic. There are four of them. And so the board welcomes Crystal Pewterbaugh. Ms. Pewterbaugh, you may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Vaccine mandates against students and employees that are unvaccined are unconstitutional, un-American, violate the NERVA codes. Testing should be for all employees or no employees. You as board members can choose not to comply. Yes, you may take financial hit as fines are levied. However, the school district will take a greater hit as parents start withdrawing their students because of these ridiculous mandates. Employees are ready and willing to lose their jobs if enforcement of said mandates happen. If you continue down this path, I believe it will be in this district's for the students and employees. Best interest for you all to either resign or step aside for real Americans to replace you or be prepared to be recalled. You don't cooperate with the government, and you don't own your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pewterbaugh. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you. The board welcomes Brandon, I'm sorry, Lesko, Brandon or Brandon Lesko. You may unmute yourself. Thank you. Mr. Lesko? Or Mr. Brandon? I'm not sure which one you first. Brandon Lesko?
I don't see anyone fitting that name here.
Yeah, thank you. The board welcomes Kristin Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, you may unmute yourself.
Hi. Sorry, I'm leaving my camera off because I am breastfeeding my baby right now. But I just want to say that for me, mandatory vaccinations, I just, I feel like we need a choice as parents to vaccinate or not vaccinate. My daughter had COVID in January, and she was only sick for like 42 hours. But the beginning of school, she got a cold, and it took her over, like, she was actually still recovering a month later with a cough. So I know my kid can beat COVID just fine and have very little symptoms. But, and the flu vaccine isn't required. And my kid has gotten worse symptoms and being sick worse with the flu than she did with COVID. And even with the flu vaccine, she's still gotten sick and gotten others sick. And with COVID, you can still, with the vaccine for COVID, you can still get others sick, and you can still get sick yourself. So it's not 100% effective, like the other vaccines that for board that are required for school. Those ones are like 100%. You don't get those illnesses anymore, and you don't pass them. Whereas COVID vaccine, you still do. So I just feel it's important that for parents and teachers to have the choice to vaccinate or not. And that's our choice as parents to make and not the school or the government or things like that. And also, this board meeting, like, wasn't even posted on the website, the board's website. So most parents didn't even know what's happening unless somebody like a teacher or the school themselves told them. And I just feel like that's extremely wrong. Like, we need to be notified, like, with enough notice of board meetings and when they are, so that we can prepare to speak or be prepared to so that we can prepare to speak or be prepared to be there, uh, at least on Zoom. If you're not going to do it on perp- in person. And Hesperia sent out questionnaires to all the parents asking what they wanted as far as van- vaccines or, and the mandates and the masks and stuff like that. And I just feel like there's been no effort to notify parents of board meetings or to see what they, what they feel, how they feel about the vaccine and mandates. Thank you. And that will be all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. LaFrench. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, uh, uh, Madam President, that concludes our public.
Okay, could we go back to Ms. Jolly to see if she's on in, um, the waiting room?
Sure. Ms. Jolly, are you on?
I see her in the, uh, waiting room now, or in the participants.
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I was having technical difficulty and, you know, it was very complicated. Okay. So, let's, sorry, yeah, I just got on. Someone's texting me, telling me that you guys called me. And thank you very much for recalling me. Okay, so I'm here as a parent and a teacher. And I'm here to give a history lesson today. So on this day in nineteen twenty-three, Adolf Hitler made the first attempt at gaining power in Germany. In January of nineteen thirty-three, he became Chancellor. And in March of nineteen thirty-three, the Reichstag passed the, whoops, Enbeding Act, essentially giving Hitler full, full dictatorial powers without constitutional limitations. He immediately passed laws against Jews that were over four hundred, but here are a few that I would like to read to you. Department of Road Hygiene or what's racial hygiene, ethnic cleansing. No police protection, denied civil rights and citizenship. No voting, pets, um, telephones. They had curfews. Their names were taken from them. Students excluded from schools and exams, banned from restaurants, resorts, parks, beaches, cinemas and concerts. Doesn't that sound familiar to you guys today as what's going on? Passports restricted, stamped without red, the red letter J. Eventually, they couldn't even leave Germany. So, over six were forced to wear the Star of David, which we see here, the Star of David. And they had state contracts that were canceled. Their concentration camps were like ghettos and extermination camps. So now let's take a look at the United States of America. Also, in March, Newsom declares state of emergency for full power. And we still haven't gotten rid of that. We have stay-at-home order and mask mandates. When it shows that fourteen days should have slowed the spread of COVID. Can't visit those in the hospital that we love. We can't get into the hospital. Schools are closed. No indoor dining. Um, we must have the vax card. And even some colleges are not allowing students to play sports without their vaccination card. Uh, one and a half years later, still wearing masks. If you're unvaccinated, you don't have to. Similar to, like I said, the Star of David. Um, there's mandates on the vaccine. Vaccinated negative tests in order to leave the country. Unpaid leave or possibly losing jobs.
Fifteen seconds.
Vaccine. So, the Declaration of Independence was our founding fathers standing for, against the tyranny of against King George and our rights to liberties. They want, they wanted to rebuild.
I'm sorry, Ms. Charlie, your, your, uh, three minutes are up.
Those conclude our comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Mitchell, can you go back to, uh, less?
Madam President, that was a prank. Thank you.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Um, we'll move to, uh, section four, governing board members' reports and announcements. Uh, we'll start with trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, um, say good evening to everyone and I'm thankful for everyone that comes out and shares their views and, and actually helps the board with, um, you know, knowing what's going on outside of this and what's going on in our district, things that we can't access or see day to day. And so I'm sure all of the board, our superintendent, we all just, um, really appreciate everyone coming forth and sharing their views, their opinion. Um, it's been just really good to have the dialogues. And, uh, there was someone that spoke about possibly having parents come together to share and, and, and get information or share information. And, um, you know, it seems like that's what we're doing here at the board meetings when it's open and the forum is available. But that would be something good, an additional, um, time where people can come together and share. So I want everybody to know that I hear your hearts, I hear your voices, and I'm truly thankful that you're sharing. As we're approaching this holiday season, um, you know, I just want to, uh, look at everyone being safe and, you know, families staying safe. It's always sad when we hear about the passing of one of our own. And, you know, that really hits hard every time I hear about that. And I just want to continue to pray for the families, pray for our district, pray for our children. And, um, at the heart of it, I just see that our children are glad to be back in school. They're glad to be with their peers. They're glad to be with their teachers. They've begun to, um, just bond and make friends. And they're just excited to be able to go back and kind of have a norm. We know it's never going to be the same, but the kids are happy to be back together. And, um, so, you know, that's my heart is to just enjoy their joy and to see them at school, having fun, doing things. Um, you know, over the last, uh, several weeks, I've been just listening to everyone's heart, what they're sharing. And I want you to know that I, I'm listening and I hear you. So I, I just, you know, look forward to the holidays, look forward to breaks with our family. Look forward to family times. We're blessed that we're able to spend time with our families. You know, so many are not here this year that were here last year. And so it's been a long year and I just want to continue to pray for schools, pray for teachers, all of our staff, our superintendent, my other board members. And, um, you know, that's it. I don't have, um, anything additional to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter. Trustee, uh, Benz?
I was just like, please don't call me. I'm not ready. No, I, um, you know, this, this state, we, the state, you know, I have friends on one side of the spectrum and the other side of the spec- spectrum. I have my opin- opinion. Um, ultimately, I can only do what I can do as one mem- member of the board. I'm really trying hard to keep my, my opinions out. I, you know, my opinion, well, here's, here's one. The school dis- districts have been put between a rock and a hard place, you know? And yes, we're like the first line where pe- people can come and voice, you know, their, 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 their concerns and all, you know, but we're kind of like left to go here. You know, the, the state's at here, you know, do, do this. And we have to take what we are give, given and make the bad best of it. You know, and all us here, you know, we're not trying to connive. We really want what's best for the kids. We always do. You know, and that will always, and you may not believe, believe me, that's okay. Okay, because I know I'm speak, speak, speaking the truth here that we want what's best for the kids, for the dis- dis- district. Um, and I always will. You know, there, there's a lot, a lot at stake, stake here. The kids, you know, they need more than just to learn the re- reading and the math. There's so much more. There's so much. They don't know how to deal with things. I have kids who are real sens- sensitive, kids that are really aim, angry and they're trying to learn how to soc- socialize again. You know, I, I, I have, have a friend who te- teaches kin- kinder. And she has kids that, you know, they've, they've been at, at home and they haven't been soc- socialized. They haven't go- gone to TK. And if they did, it, it was, was on Zoom. And he, we all know how much Zoom got done, you know? And so she's having to start like as if she's kind of, we're working with three-year year olds. They're afraid of the big, big kids because they're not used to, to them. You know, we're, so, you know, I'm, so there, there's a lot. You know, so I have, I have learned to be more pa- patient, you know, more understanding with my own stu- stu- students and the kids at my, my school. So that's what I, again, I'm here for, for the kids. You know, I'm in for the long-term invest- investment for our kids. Okay, um, that's all. Thank, 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 thank you.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee Echus?
Yeah, I was gonna say a few more things, but since this is just a special meeting, uh, I just kind of wanted to keep it short. Um, I just got back from Florida and I just want to let everybody know that, wow, that state is like wide open, back to normal, business as usual. And it was just so refreshing. I really wish California would get there. You know, it's, it, the normacy, we just need to get there. Um, I feel, I, I have my own thoughts, my own feelings. Some of you already know that. Um, I'm kind of reserving my opinions because I want to hear other people's opinions. Uh, we all have our own thoughts and ideas. We all know different things. Uh, we all do different research and know what we know and feel what we feel. And as humans, we're entitled to that. I also believe in choice. I believe in freedom. Uh, most of you know that. I say that at every board meeting. Um, but I, I'm, I just really miss the getting back to normal and people being able to express themselves and smile and be happy and laugh and enjoy life. And, um, I, I was just very blessed to be able to experience that, uh, when I was there. Um, but now I'm back home and things are back to kind of the same and it's a little depressing. But, uh, it is what it is, you know, and you get through it. But, um, I sure do appreciate our board meetings. I appreciate hearing what the public does have to say. I did like that comment that was made, I believe by Ms. Rodriguez, where she said that, uh, people in Hesperia are doing surveys and parents are being, uh, asked how they feel about things. To me, that's what it's all about. We want to know what people feel and what they think and what they're expressing and, and, and all that. And when I hear people call into our board meetings, I love it because it lets me know what you're thinking, what you're feeling. And I also wanted Ms. Her- Hernandez to know that I agree with her. I like her comments and I do value her. I value everybody that calls in. Um, I mean, it's, it's, you know, no matter how you feel about this, again, we all have opinions. I, I appreciate everybody's opinions. I want to hear everybody's opinions because my opinion isn't what matters. It's what everybody else feels and how we feel collectively. And in the long run, it's all about you and how you feel and especially about the children. And I know we haven't quite gotten there yet and it's coming up. And that's going to be really interesting to see how we deal with that. But, um, I'm ready for it. I'm ready for that conversation. I'm ready for whatever lies ahead. And I will have the children's best interest in my mind and in my vote. And I have it now. And I know lots of you are paying attention to the way I vote. And when I vote the way I do, there's a reason for it always. I don't take anything lightly. I do my research and everything comes straight from my heart and from my head. And I vote not only as a board member, but as a parent myself and how I would feel if my children were in these schools and, and having to go through this. They were at one time, but I'm very blessed not right now. I mean, my heart is just hurting for everybody who's having to go through this right now. And I'm very blessed that God put me on this board to be able to see both sides of this and to make decisions. So, um, with his help, I'm going to continue to do what I do and pray about all my votes, all my decisions and, uh, pray over our board and our school district. So that's kind of just what I wanted to say. I don't want to lecture anybody. I don't want to give my opinions. Just want you to know that I'm here for all of you and I do take very seriously everything I vote on and everything I do. So thank you again for calling in. I really love to hear your opinions and it really helps me. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Echus. Trustee LaFrench? Trustee LaFrench?
But I lost my mouth. Okay, um, I wanted to, uh, start off by, you know, saying thank you for everyone that's here, that, um, thank you. Uh, we all value your opinions. Um, I wanted to say that I know that this is a matter that is, um, close to all our hearts. We all have our opinions. Um, I know that, um, sometimes it's difficult to, um, hear, um, opinions that may be different from yours or mine or however it is. I just want, um, everyone to stay calm and keep your focus on why we are all here. We all are here, whether we're teachers, whether we're parents. We all are here for, um, the children. Our children right now need us, uh, the most while we navigate through this, um, time. And I pray for calm. I pray for peace and I thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, trustee LaFrench. Um, I would like to say thank you for everyone taking the time out to voice your opinions. And, and, and trust me, your opinions do matter. We listen and we respect your opinion. Everyone does not feel the same. And, um, I would just like to apologize. I've gotten many, many emails, both for the mandate, some against the mandate. I haven't responded to any of them yet, um, because it was so many. But I want to let you all know that I read each and every one of them. And I thank you for your opinion, letting the board know. Um, again, um, I have to reiterate that when we have a choice to make a decision based on, when we are given a choice, you know, we look at every aspect of what that decision will do to our community and to our teachers, to our students and to our families. And we have to follow the law. And I know, uh, unfortunate for a lot of you, um, you don't believe in what's happening, but we have to follow the law. And as trustees, we must follow the law, whether we agree with it or not. You know, um, and we've taken this opportunity to hear what you have to say. Um, we're not forcing, that mandate is not forcing you to get the vaccine right now. Now, something will change. Hopefully, you're not forced, but something will change in the near future. But you have a choice now, whether to get the vaccine or get tested. We, um, we're almost two years into this. And Adelanto was one of the last school districts to open because we did not want to open until we felt it was safe for our children to come back. And at the time that we opened, it was. We, we had procedures in place, but it's all new. But it's all new. This is new to us. We have never been, well, the, the country has been in a pandemic. But none of us has ever been in a pandemic. So, you know, we're working through it. And the health and safety is important for our children, for our staff. And they have to feel comfortable coming to school. Parents have to be comfortable sending their children to school. And teachers and staff have to be comfortable coming to school, knowing that we're following the law. Not our own opinion of what we should do. We're following the law. And if the law governs us to do certain things, we have to follow that law. And I, and, and. I just want you to know that we're in this together. It's even though we may have differences of opinions, we're in this together and we hear you. We hear you. So with that said, I'm gonna move on to, uh, the consent agenda. Section five, we'll be taking items five point oh two through five point oh five. Just any trustees wanna pull an item? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hence, I mo- mo- motion to approve.
I have a motion by Trustee Benz. Is there a second?
A second, LaFrance.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben sign.
Trustee Eckes.
Hi.
Trustee Hunter. Trustee Hunter.
She's muted, Trustee Hunter. You're muted.
I.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass five zero. Uh, moving on to section six, uh, there were no items removed from consent. So we'll go to new business section seven. Um, approve board resolution twenty point twenty-two point twenty-four. Um, making findings as required by AB three sixty-one to permit the Board of Trustees meetings to continue to be conducted by teleconferencing. While COVID nineteen emergency remain in place. Before I open that up and ask for a vote, I, I, I just wanna, um. Read some things about, uh, the governor's executive order, AB sixty-one. And the reason why we have established not to go back into regular meetings. Um, the governor's executive order, AB three sixty-one, was established to mitigate, mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen pandemic. As the state continued to reopen and to ensure that critical governmental functions are not interrupted. California continued to be a declared state of emergency. AB three sixty-one gives local agencies the flexibility in conducting meetings, public meetings virtually. With this in mind, the district established five core values in response to the pandemic. The first core value continue to be a priority for the district. Adhere to COVID nineteen safety guidelines to protect the health, safety, and wellness of students and staff. Safety is a concern and a priority for our greater A E S D community. When you review the current COVID nineteen data, San Bernardino County and the High Desert are both still dealing with the pandemic. The daily new cases in San Bernardino County on April sixth, twenty twenty-one was three point four. On September ninth, twenty twenty-one, it increased to ninety-seven point eight. In the most recent data, daily cases have increased to a hundred and thirty point five. The number of people hospitalized in San Bernardino County with COVID nineteen is trending upward again. State data released Monday, November first shows. COVID nineteen in Adalanto, the city of Adalanto and Victorville. Have seen an upward trend since April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Adalanto had one point six. And Victorville had four point three daily case rates. In most recent data, Adalanto. Have twenty-one point five and Victorville eighteen point six daily case rates. Out of an abundance of caution and to ensure the health and safety and wellness of our community. Is to continue hosting virtual meetings. A positive result of hosting virtual meetings, we have seen attendance increase dramatically over the past twenty months. With increase of attendance, attendees and giving the community a need to know. To speak on issues of vaccines, vaccinations. And we'll, we'll exte- and we've extended the public hearing on single subjects to. We said thirty minutes, but we've increased it to an hour. I'm asking the Board of Trustees to continue to hold the me- meetings virtual until. It's all safe for us to return. And so with that being said, um, I will ask for a motion. And then we'll get into discussion. Um, I need a motion to, um. Continue meeting and we will have to do this once a month, every thirty days according to the guidelines on A- Assembly Bill three sixty-one. To ensure that we're still, um, in a state of a pandemic and, um. And then we'll vote accordingly and make that decision. So I need a motion.
Hence, I mo- motion to approve.
Approve to continue virtually?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Trustee LaFrance, a second.
And a second by Trustee LaFrance. Okay, we're in discussion. Okay, I wanna hear from all the trustees. So I'll start with Trustee Eckes.
Um, I'm still in the middle over this one, to be honest with you. I know I believe in transparency. And, um, I do want us to get back into the public realm and be able to conduct our meetings like we used to. But at the same time, I have a few reservations. And, um, just recently, um, a few things have been brought to my attention that I have to consider. So, um, I'm still in the middle over this. So I'll, I'll be willing to go with either way the board feels about this. Uh, since we are a, a group of five, I want everybody to feel comfortable. Um, and it's not just about me. But a- again, I want, you know, the public and the board to know that I'm still in the middle over this. I, I can go either way with this decision.
Thank you, Trustee Eckes. Trustee Hunter?
Um, on this, I believe that there are some very positive things. One of which you mentioned earlier about making the meeting more accessible. Um, we have had just so many people that are able to participate now and have shared with me. That, you know, the fact that our meetings are virtual, they are able to. Be, you know, at their home, at their desk, and still be able to join in. And again, it goes back to safety. You know, it's not just about the five board members. There's staff involved there. Uh, you know, it takes a, a lot to put the meetings together and there are a lot of people involved. And so being able to. Ensure everyone's safety during this time because we don't know. You know, I, I hear both sides, just like Trustee Eckes said, but yet, you know, we're still losing people. And if we can mitigate that risk at all. By not exposing people, not gathering in, in these large groups. Because it's unknown when we set up, how many people will show up, how many people will be there, you know? Um, so I, I would rather err on the safe side. And, and, um, you know, try to keep people as safe as we can during this time. So that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter. Trustee LaFrance?
Um, I would have to say that I am on both sides of the fence when it comes to this C S O meeting in person or staying on Zoom. I can compare with, uh, Trustee, um, Eckes when it comes to, um, how. Um, the emails that are received, um, and all different other things that come to light, uh, here recently. Where, um, I'm in agreements with what the board decides.
Trustee, uh, Benz?
Um, well, per- personally for my, myself, I'd be like, sure, let, let's go back. But I agree with Trustee Hunter, Hunter, that we should err on the side of ca- caution. I also, you know, we have no notice that we have more par- participa- patient. Through Zoom, you know, I hate Zoom, but. This is more, more flexible for pe- people to stay, stay at home and just keep, keep. Keep, keep this on the phone and on the computers, you know, than have to go to a board. And yeah, I, you know, the one thing I do wor- worry is. You know, will we have a, a, a sp- spreader? You know, that, that's the one thing, you know, just. I, you know, we will redress this and I think that we should look, look at the num- numbers, you know, and see. But again, I just, I, I concur with, with, with Trustee Hun- Hunter on this one.
Thank you, Trustee Benz. And, um, again, uh, it is my, you know. I've had open meetings and I enjoy open meetings. I enjoy looking out and seeing the public. Um, we never have a hundred and forty-four participants ever. Um, but I, I'm looking out for the safety, the health and safety of our community. And, you know, every day I'm hearing of someone going down and it's, and it's painful. And, uh, I do not wanna see, again, like Trustee Benz just mentioned the super spread. And, um, so we will address this issue every thirty days to see where we are. And hopefully, we can get back into our board room. I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And, but until then. Um, until it's safe for us to do that, we will be conducting these meetings. Um, for every thirty days, we'll take another look at it. So with that said, I'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben sign.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, I.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass five zero. Moving on to seven oh two, Business Services. Approve award for R F P for COVID testing services. Dr. Mitchell, turn us over to you.
Thank you, Trustee Turner. I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Mr. Kraus and Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community that are here with us this evening. On August eleventh, the order came down that districts would have to collect information on our employees related to their vaccination status. And if they did not provide proof or were not vaccinated, they would have to participate in what the state calls diagnostic screening testing. On a weekly basis, starting in October. And so what we have been doing, uh, since that order came down. We've been working with our human resources to work with all employees to let them know where to go test outside of the district. However, at the same time, we submitted an R F P out there into the marketplace. To, uh, see what companies would be available and be interested in, uh, providing onsite. Uh, diagnostic screening testing to our employees within the district so that our employees did not have to go outside of the district. After hours when maybe they wanna go home and go eat dinner. And so, um, we submitted an R F P. Uh, in the backup documentation of this board agenda, you will see all of those responses. And the process is when they come in, there's a committee that screens all of the, uh, requests for proposals that come in. And then they grade them and they decide as a committee together, uh, which ones they want to submit forward for consideration. And then the final decision is made of which company to, uh, take to the board as a recommendation. And so before you this evening. Uh, we are bringing our recommendation for Heal three sixty. And Heal three sixty is a company that, uh. We believe can provide this testing, uh, for our district. Uh, we have checked their references thoroughly with other districts that they are involved in, in the state. Uh, as far as the testing that they've been doing, uh, around the state and much larger districts. Uh, not only myself did reference checks, but, uh, also, uh, other staff members independently. Uh, to get a, a sense of how they have been doing. And all the reference checks turned out very well. And so also that I personally talked to the, um, executive of the company who's also with us in the board meeting this evening. To assist with any potential questions that the board may have. Um, hopefully, if approved this evening, uh, the company would gear up and they can speak to that in a few minutes. But, uh, their goal is to get started quickly, uh, this month if board approved with that testing. Um, for our district and be able to offer those services. As you can see in the agenda, it breaks down the services that would be provided. Uh, by this company. And, uh, they have a stellar record, as far as we can tell, in the state, in various districts across the state. Performing these exact same procedures for the diagnostic screening testing that R R F P had requested for them to do. And so with that, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions the board may have. But this, again, would alleviate having to send employees out to county testing sites or other testing sites. Uh, where they would have to test outside of the district. This would be more convenient for them to have it in-house and have it done on a weekly basis. And also, uh, be able to meet the mandate that came down on August eleventh related to the requirement that school districts perform this, uh, diagnostic screening testing.
Okay, before we get into questions, uh, board, I would just like to ask, uh, Mr. Kraus. Um, approximately how many tests employees require this test? What percentage of our staff?
I can tell you that currently we have about four hundred and eleven that would need to test weekly. And that number fluctuates depending on if they get their vaccination, provide that proof of vaccination to human resources. Uh, we keep a spreadsheet, so that number fluctuates again depending on that. But, um, Mr. Moran is in the audience this evening. And he could speak more to those numbers as he's actively tracking, uh, how many total employees are vaccinated versus, um, the number that are not. But, uh, last time I talked to him this morning, it was around four hundred and eleven.
Four hundred and eleven. Okay, okay, um. Uh, Mr. Moran, is that accurate? A- a- approximate? Please, are those numbers approximately accurate? Mr. Moran?
Yes, sorry about that. Uh, yes, so we have four hundred and eleven employees who, uh, required to undergo weekly testing.
Okay, great. Okay, now trustees, do you have questions? I'll start with you, Trustee LaFrance.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Trustee Benz?
So is this kinda like what L L C A M was supposed to do, but now it's a different com- company? That will take to gonbe the test, testing?
This company will do the testing that, uh, this is different than the symptomatic testing that is in the contract with the A M L L C. So symptomatic testing is when they contact trace, A M L L C's team contact traces and determines that people might be symptomatic. That's the testing that they've been performing, sending people out to get tested at the county centers. This, on the other hand, is different in this, in the aspect of, this is the August eleventh mandate from the California Department of Public Health. That requires our district to do that. And so it is a different type of testing, um, than what A M L L C, uh, was in their original scope of the work.
Okay.
Trustee Benz, if I could just jump in there real quick to clear. Uh, just for the community, we have about eleven hundred staff members in total. And about four hundred and eleven of them require weekly testing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, you had mench- mentioned that there are. Um, of other dis- districts use, using the, this comp- company and some large, large ones. Can, can, can you name some, some of those dis- dis- districts by, by any chance?
Yes, absolutely. Let me, uh, pull up there, uh, I apologize. I have to go back to the, uh, the. Backup that's attached to this. I apologize. There's several documents attached to this, but one of those. But one of those documents does have uh the Heal three sixty uh districts that they're currently working with. So for example, Monterey Peninsula Unified School District, up in my, up on the Monterey Peninsula. We have the Santa Maria Bonita Unified School District. We have the Tracy Unified School District. We have the Evergreen School District. And there are several more that uh Mr. Mohammed Osman Mohammed is with us this evening and he's the chief operating officer and he will be able to also speak to other uh districts potentially that they are in at this time in California.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Just the uh Hunter, do you have questions?
Uh, yes, just to, um, I wanted, I don't know if I missed it and I was reviewing again the information, but um can you speak to staffing? How that will work? Staffing, because I know that was a concern before with the other company.
Yes, one of the things we did, and and I'll have Mr. Osman come on in a second here, but one of the things we did in our reference checks was ask that very question. So from the time these other districts, when their boards approve them, how soon were staff on the ground? And um just about every one, if not all of them, said within a week. And I'm not saying that that's going to be the case, that we're optimistic that Mr. Osman and his team can gear up that fast. But talking to the other districts, uh it was within a week, two week, under two weeks that they had the staffing. They were geared up, um they were setting up logistics and started testing staff. And so um if you, uh President Turner, if you don't mind, I'd like to just uh ask Mr. Osman to address that, if that's okay, or do you want to go through?
It's fine. No, I'm speaking with this guy, yes.
Mr. Osman, you're here in the meeting, if you would unmute yourself and just speak to uh staffing.
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone, it's Osman. So, yeah, as for the staffing, we are a five hundred plus um employee-based company. And uh for the staffing needs, this is the same concern which all the districts asked us on the first instance. And uh we have served uh uh like larger districts. And uh for us, staffing hasn't been a concern because we have recruitment teams uh which work um on daily basis on recruiting new teammates. And uh we have been able to um as as we receive the work order that um we will be needing um X number of tests done on a specific day or on a weekly basis. As for that, we work on the staffing and we can have that done within a week of timeline as we receive the work order. And uh for when we did the onboarding of Santa Maria Bonita District, even that was a concern for them. Like uh previous companies didn't, did it promise with the staffing and they were not able to deliver. And when we showed up on the site, we uh showed up with twenty-five medical assistants. And uh we uh we have videos, uh press releases to reference those um events, what happened. And uh we were, we were published in Santa Maria Times and uh we had the crew come in and uh that when we deployed four permanent sites at the Santa Maria District and we employed, deployed like two mobile testing teams to cover all the schools. So right now we are taking care of the Tracy, which has like around thirty schools. And we're taking care of Santa Maria Bonita, we're taking care of Evergreen, Salinas, London. And uh we are um uh Monterey Peninsula School District. We have uh uh Aroma San Juan School District and uh we are serving the Santa Cruz and uh County. And uh we are even servicing uh uh Eldorado um School District, so. And we have community sites based in L A. And we have been doing this from long, from the inception and we are primary care, urgent care group. So having uh the medical personnel in timely manner, is that something um what we can deliver?
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, and then I had a second question because um they, we could clarify um swab collection, would that be um nasal only or uh would the saliva test be available?
Yeah, so we offer all the types of like, even we offer nasal swab collections. And uh when some um districts, certain individuals, they ask for saliva test. Staff members are um reluctant towards nasal swabs and they want saliva test. Um at that moment, we provide saliva test kits and uh that's even an option.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Our trustee Eckes.
Yes, I have several questions. Um, again, so they will be allowed to either do uh mouth saliva testing and would they also be able to do home testing?
Yes, we do have a division for home testing wherein we can provide home testing kits and we can have that delivered to the district office. That can be picked up from the district office or we can mail out to the individual's home. And that can be swabbed and uh once that swab has been collected, we um add a UPS overnight um bag inside the testing kit. So our U P C R sample can be collected and put in the bag and that can be mailed out end of the day and before the cutoff time four P M. And since we have a lab in uh Lake Forest, L A, um the results are pretty fast um within twenty-four to thirty-six hours.
Oh, wonderful, okay. And then my next question is, and I don't know if you can answer this or if the district can. But as we all know, people who are vaccinated can still get and still give COVID. Um, they're not immune from this. Um, and I was wondering, you know, in in the future, very near future, there is a possibility that they may also have to be tested, which means we would have to test every single person in our district. If that was to happen, would you be able to do that for our entire district?
Absolutely. So uh for an understanding, right now, any school district which we are signing up, we are doing student testing, staff testing, and we are helping the school with the mandate, right? The weekly mandated testing, we are testing for the athletes and we are even testing the community of that district. So um we do in phases, like um if the district wants to start with employees and students um and athletes, we start with that, then after that, they get comfortable that, hey, these individual, this company is able to provide the service um completely to our student, staff, members. Now let's open up for the community at that moment, even if you're considering that we will be open for that. So um resource wise, and uh that's something what we have been doing, we have been com- providing a complete solution rather than putting school in a position of restrictions, right? We try to provide and work along with the district to take care of as much as we can while.
Okay, yeah, it's all part of supply and demand. Okay, and then my last question, I don't know if this would be for you or for my uh superintendent of business, but um I noticed that it said that it uh uh the bills would be taken care of a cares and insurance. Okay, so my question is, will the employees be paying? Uh, okay, if they don't have insurance, will they be paying for this? Or is, does our district have money to pay for this? That's where I'm a little um hazy on this whole thing is, who exactly is going to be paying for the test? Will it be uh the insurance companies? And if they don't have insurance, will it be the employees? And it, or is the district paying for this? That's, that was my big question.
Sure, sure, let me help you understand. Right now, there is a bill which got passed two weeks back um in California that mandates all the insurance companies to cover surveillance testing. Earlier, it was only exposure testing was getting covered. Uh, and that's the reason, so like, you know, companies are backing out. There was a bill which got passed and uh which states every surveillance testing in the state of California has to be covered by the insurance companies and the uninsured program. So we, being the local company based in California, we have uh um we are in network and contracted with majority of the insurance payers. And the individuals who are uninsured, we build to the cares that. And that's a federal government fund wherein, you know, of it, that's for all uninsured individuals. And uh we build the fund and there is no cost neither to the district, there is no cost to the employees, no cost to the students and uh no cost to any of the community member, whoever wants to get tested. Since we run community sites as well and we have a lot of uh individuals who come in, majority of them are like, you know, uninsured, uh who we see. And we do a ser- lot of underserved areas um in L A and uh all across the nation as well in Texas as well. So um we have been running this program and there has been no bill sent out to any of those uh um individuals who got tested.
Okay, so the bottom line is no one has to pay for the testing, it's all free at this point.
Correct, and that will be mentioned in the contract which we sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, my question, you know, I have, I have a few, um. I'm gonna go back to the billing because it says that no financial, no physical impact to the district. But then you said, you says that there's no cost per test. But then in parentheses, you say cares and insurance. I'm, I'm, yeah, what insurance company are you speaking of?
Uh, can you um ask the question again, ma'am, if you don't mind?
Okay, under your no-cost test, you said the bills will be paid through cares and insurance. What is insurance? I, I know you said in the no cost to the district, but what are you, what, what insurance companies are you referring to?
Insurance companies, uh uh we are referring to any commercial insurances like Blue Cross, Aetna, Cigna or Medicare, Medicaid, any type of insurance. If an individual has that insurance, we build the insurance, but there is no copay, there is no coinsurance. And uh there is uh, we use modifiers because right now, under the Emergency Act Management, insurance companies are uh they charge, they they do not charge any of their subscribers for COVID testing and there's no out-of-pocket cost. And we uh run this program all across in California, Texas and all, right? So we bill um under that Emergency Act and uh there is no out-of-pocket expense which any employee has to pay out other than what their insurance get reimburses us. If their insurance doesn't have a plan of that particular coverage, they deny, then we uh bill it to the CARES Act and there is no cost coming to the employee.
Okay, and this will take place until the end of the school year? Am I correct, June twenty-second?
Yes, we, our, our general contracts, like when we are reaching out to schools is they are requesting for our service until the end of the school year unless there is any change in the requirements uh from the, you know, from the state, uh exchanging any requirements, right? At that particular moment, then we will discuss about, uh the school will come up to us and we will have this conversation, conversation.
Okay.
But all of our contracts with all the school districts is the, for the end, end of the academy here until twenty twenty-two.
Okay, you know, I was, I was, and and I have to be uh transparent and when I saw, I I looked at um all of these, the companies that's listed here, I looked at the R F Ps and, you know, it came with quite a big stack of information. And when I saw yours, you know, it had three pages, so it wasn't clear, it wasn't a lot of information. And so um I had a lot of questions because
Absolutely.
Um, this is brand new, surveillance testing is brand new. So no one is really, really experienced in this. And uh with four hundred and eleven employees right now um that has to be tested weekly.
Yes.
Um. And you have something from the insurance company saying that they will cover this weekly testing?
Yes, I can share with you the bill which got passed and uh which states it's a mandate for all the insurance companies to cover all the bills. And from our end, when we send out the contract, right, in the contract, it will be mentioned that there is going to be no cost billed to the district.
No, not to the district, I'm talking, I'm, I'm really concerned about individual employees.
Yes, yes.
Right now.
Right.
Because the district will not be billed, you know, for health insurance, the district will not be billed. I'm talking about our employees. Um, another question, four hundred and eleven people weekly, how many, how many staff members will you send to us for that, to cover that?
So. So if you're requesting from four hundred and eleven employees, do you want those, all the tests to be done in one day? And how do you want that to be planned out?
Yeah.
As for that, we can.
As long as it's weekly, we, we don't know, it's up to the, I can't answer that. We, they have to be done weekly, okay?
Okay.
So it's up to you and our department and our, and us to figure that out, but it has to be done weekly.
Yes, so generally what we're doing is uh one of the district who is asking the employees to be tested on a weekly basis, this uh they schedule us for one day a week wherein we go in and we test all the employees in that day. If due to, you know, if the school wants to divide it into two days, then we can even do that. And if the school wants to open up the tefri, the no-cost testing option for the students and for the athletes and, you know, for the community, then if you want us to be over on the site from Monday through Friday during the working hours, we can even have the permanent site set up in the school for the academic year wherein it will be able, as an option for all the individuals within the district to come in and get tested. And it's a resource what we can provide, as long as, you know, like uh that service has been utilized, um then we will be able to provide those resources.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a specific question. Tracy Unified, you mentioned that they, they have thirty schools there. Um, how are you working that campus? How are you working that district? What are you doing, are you there every day?
Yes, we are Monday through Friday, seven A M to six P M. Three schools, we have permanent sites. We have permanent staff members, like each team has like around four to five team members. We have two mobile teams, um we do two-hour testing at each school. And the two mobile teams goes to every school every two hours and they test and they go, go to different schools. So that's how we were able to uh cover up all the thirty schools in one week.
Okay, okay, um. My next question was uh uh trustee Eckes mentioned home testing. How can you monitor home testing? How do you know that the employee in fact provided that test?
So, we have.
Before you answer that, uh uh Mr. uh Moran, can you clarify the direction that we've given to staff already about home test?
Yes, at this time, um our notices uh inform employees that home testing is not allowed.
Okay, at this time, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, now will the employees providing, administering their own test? Or will uh your staff be doing that test for them?
Our staff will be doing the tests.
And will the saliva test, uh the rapid, what, what type of test do you have?
So we have rapid antigen test, we have rapid, uh we have the R T P C R test, the both are the nasal swab tests. And the rapid antigen will provide results in fifteen minutes, R T P C R in twenty-four to thirty-six hours. Saliva test only for those individuals who cannot provide, uh do the nasal swabs. We can do saliva and the results are within the same twenty-four to thirty-six hours.
Okay, and you mentioned that you have a laboratory and you will be, will be taking those samples to your lab and we will get them back within, you said, twenty-four to thirty-six hours?
Yes, that's, yes, and uh the uh we will be using UPS service every day, this, end of the day, the samples will be shipped out to UPS.
Okay, are you looking to hire people here to uh? Okay, you're looking to hire people in the high desert to assist you and carrying out these students?
So since our testing sites, we have seven testing sites uh in L A, which are two and a half hours away from. And uh this will, um if we are doing, starting with s- staff testing and only once a day, um once in a week or two times in a week, at that moment, we can send out our mobile team to do the testing while we staff for new team members um to help out for the weekly testing.
Okay, I'm not, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. I, I asked the question, are you looking to hire staff here to assist in completing the weekly test?
We, yes, ma'am, we are looking to staff, uh staff, local employees. And uh until we do that, we will be sending out a mobile team uh which we have from L A for the testing.
And and so say, for instance, if you can't get anyone hired here, and that's one of the things that um issues that we had uh before. You have enough to complete this task.
Yes, at that moment, we can send out our mobile uh team. We have a mobile team which goes around and uh does testing right now and we can send out our mobile team. Until we have a local uh testing crew build up, we can send out our mobile team for the testing.
Okay, and when can you start?
Um, within the one week of the. Um within the one week of the uh work order getting uh to us. And what's your timeline? What are you looking at? We can try to accommodate because we already have mobile teams in place. We will be able to accommodate as soon as the need is approved.
Mr. Asmaan, the the Mohammed, the logistics of this contract will be discussed with staff. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't get it, sir.
We we will discuss the logistics with staff with you, not during this meeting.
Got it, okay.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Anyone have any additional questions that they want to ask? Um go around again, none? Trustee Hunter?
No, none. Thank you, Mister Mohammed.
Trustee La French?
No, thank you. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, trustee Benz?
No, I have have none now.
Okay, trustee Akas?
Yes, I do actually. Um as a board member, I I want to be um informed and up to date on everything that we're doing uh with testing. Uh sometimes I feel I'm in the dark. I did not know that the district was not offering um home testing. Uh these are things that I feel the board should know about so that we, when the public asks us questions or has comments, uh we can kind of help along uh uh the better understanding of how this works. So if the district can provide kind of like a, oh, I don't want to use the word cheat sheet, but if if you could get us um just like a a a one page standard of uh explanation of what exactly we're doing so that we can answer the public and if they have quick questions about, you know, are we allowed to do home testing? Are we allowed to do the saliva, you know, just real quick things? Because this was all new to me tonight and it kind of threw me for a second. And then I got to thinking, you know, I don't feel I've been updated through this whole process about the testing and it has caused problems. So, you know, like like last time, I thought the district was doing this on site. I thought we were paying for it and then uh through all kinds of emails and commotion, that's when I found out at the last minute that, no, we weren't doing any of that. And that's not really helpful for a board member not to know what we're doing. So if we all understand and we're all on the same page and we all have that same information, um I would really appreciate that as a board member, knowing what the staff knows and what direction we're doing and what kind of uh rules and regulations we're doing. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. But I would really appreciate to have that type of in for information, our protocols when it comes to the testing.
I'm more happy to provide that, trustee Akas, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, trustee Akas, and that's all I have for right now. Okay, so uh that will conclude the discussion. Um. Anita, do we do a motion on this, uh Mrs. Silvery or?
No. Madam President, we need a motion and we need a second.
Okay, I need a motion.
I motion Hunter.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Hunter. Is there a second?
A second trustee La French?
And a second by trustee La French? Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
And sign.
Trustee Akas?
No.
Trustee Hunter?
Hunter, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I, I'm sorry, Z.
That's okay, trustee uh Turner.
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass four one.
Moving on to section eight, superintendent's report, uh events and future activities significant to the district.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Um since I've got a bunch of announcements to make, I want to uh, I'm looking forward to uh our professional development day uh being uh scheduled.
Mr. Mitchell, you muted. Got muted.
No, he's not.
Oh, he's not.
Oh, sorry, guys, it's my sound system. I apologize.
Um again, we're looking forward to Friday, November twelfth, seven thirty three, we will host our certified staff uh training all day. Board, we're asking you to um come uh at about eight o'clock to give some welcoming comments and so please send a text to uh Xavier to let her know if you can commit to that. I also want to announce to the committee that uh the community that last year I I hosted a series of suffer with the superintendents. Now, we are launching those again. Our first one is scheduled for Thursday, November eighteenth from six to seven. And we'll have login information um sent out to parents as well as on our on our website. We will be able to hear uh from our parents on on whatever questions they may have or thoughts they may have about the about the child's education. So looking forward to that. So board, you certainly are invited to that as well. Want to congratulate our uh our all of our assistant super superintendents. Uh Dr. Dwyer's on, Mr. Moran and Mister Kraus uh have completed their masters in governance training, so. So our whole cabinet uh is 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 now mid-trained. As you know, C S B A's masters in governance training is is an intensive training uh primarily uh for for board members, but the superintendents and cabinets also, it's 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 um advisable to attend. It really teaches you the ins and outs of of the Brown Act and and all the rules and regulations related to a go board board governance. Just having our whole team trained uh in in that work is really important. It will make us a tighter team. Um it will be a more effective team, so so congratulations, assistant subs. Um I want to congratulate, we also have some more congratulations, I want to congratulate Sandra Alameo, Yerry Paralta, Veronica Martiel, uh they as well as uh Xavier Le Bay completed months ago. They just finished C S B A's executive assistance course. And so this is again another uh intensive training uh for designed for executive assistants uh to provide executive uh su- support to uh, you know, superintendents and assistant superintendents. And they've learned a whole lot. Uh our team is getting lean and mean and so we just want to congratulate our staff for for uh continuing their learning and and continuing their investment uh in their own professional learning. Want to congratulate again, um Mister Moran, uh the whole human resource team on a successful job fair that was held on September eighteenth. Uh we have been able to secure thirty classified substitutes from that job job fair as well as uh hired uh six permanent staff. We are, we do have another twenty twenty five applicants in the hopper for various positions in our district. And so we're solely uh chipping away from our classified um vacancies and so I know that our classified staff has really, really been working hard. They've been understaffed. Uh we've been here hit really hard. And so just want to thank our whole classified staff throughout the district for all that you do. We hear you, we understand that things are hard and we're, we've acknowledged uh what you're what you're doing, what you the value that you've add to this district. And so we're working hard to continue to fill vacancies across the district. Also want to congratulate, um we have three teachers where the Rotary Club of Victorville has awarded some grants and want want to congratulate Shante Duarte of El Mirage, Jonathan McDonald of Mesa Linda and Francisco Rogers at West Side Park. These three teachers were awarded um um small, small classroom grants. Mrs. Duarte's grant is to purchase butterfly pavilion habitats. Mister McDonald will refurbish a Chinese dragon for students to use during celebrations. And Miss Rogers will purchase science kits specifically uh for butterfly eggs and hermit crab and a Venus flytrap. I'm really curious to see uh these thing, what the teachers do with kids here. Congratulations to all those, to those three teachers. Also want to congratulate, uh we have some schools that were recently honored uh for their po- their positive behavior intervention and supports program at their schools. And so they were uh honored by the state. Want to congratulate Melva Davis Academy for receiving a platinum status, P V I S recognition. Morgan Kincaid received a silver status um and then Victoria McGathen and West Side Park also received silver uh status for their P V I S programs. Want to thank all the staff. You cannot do uh P V I S. The administrators, the teachers, the classified staff, everybody has to own it for these things to work. And so just want to congratulate those schools for amazing accomplishment, creating safe environments for students and teachers to really work and learn. Uh some other things, there are just just some random ones. Um one of the congratulate uh Columbia. They recently uh wa- a father returned uh from deployment and surprised his daughter. And so we got some great pictures on the website of that reunion. Congratulations. We um at Eagle Ranch, we had kids uh wearing Hawaiian gear once and got this, some great pictures on the website for that. Uh El Mirage had a treat. Um their students um got a chance to see it. Uh a police helicopter land on their field and got it, got to spend some time with some SWAT officers. And so kids were very excited about that. Want to congratulate George students uh for their annual egg drop as part of the science curriculum. Gus Franklin uh just recently celebrated their fall awards for kids. Gus Franklin also, uh their kids also showing off their engineering and knowledge skills by building candy corn catapults. So kids are having fun with science and engineering. Also, I guess, uh kids, um kids were acknowledged for for exceeding uh their reading goal for the course. So congratulations, students and teachers over at Gus. And Melva Davis, we had a great start with girls varsity and J V volleyball team hosted their first volleyball match in almost two years. Congratulations. And then also we had Eagle Ranch, Ted Vic, Victoria McGathen in West Creek, as well as West Side hosted their fall festivals with staff and students in costume. And so really just wanted to spend some time, board, um reminding our community uh why we're in business and what we're here for. Once I congratulate all of our staff for all the work that you do to create amazing opportunities for our kids uh to show their genius, to prepare them for uh their next steps in life. And so we, so despite the political cloud that looms over our country, our nation and and the world, we still have bright smiles, uh teachers and staff making things happen for kids at our school, our leaders are working hard and our classified staff is working behind the scenes to create a wonderful environment for our staff to 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 live, work, and students to learn. And so thank you for all that you do and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Do anyone, any trustees have questions for Dr. Mitchell regarding his comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to section nine, close session declarations. We'll be taking items um nine point oh two through nine point oh four. Section ten, public testimony before closed session. Um. Public comment period for closed session items on this agenda uh within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board. I will not read that long thing again. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any public comment periods for closed session?
Uh we do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um moving on to section eleven, uh recess to closed session. Can I get a motion?
Akas by motion.
I have a motion by trustee Akas. Is there a second?
A second trustee La French?
No, uh second by trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
And sign.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hunter?
Hunter, I.
La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Uh trustee Turner, I, motion pass five zero. The time is seven fifteen P M. We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.
And we will not be reporting, did you mention that, uh, trustee Turner?
Sorry.
We will not be reporting decisions now.
No, we will not be, this will not be a readout for session to close. So uh publicly, we will be in closed session probably for a couple hours. I don't want anyone sitting around waiting. Um if you want to wait, you're more than welcome to come back in. Uh we decided to do closed session last, so you would not have to sit around and wait. We heard your voice last week. So um maybe from here on in, we may do closed session at the end of our meetings. Give you enough time to ask the questions and make the comments. Um so it's up to you. If you want to hang around, you can, but there will not be any reporting out of closed session. So, okay, we're in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Coming back. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Xavier, you want to roll call?
Yes. Trustee Benz? Trustee Akas?
Mike, can you and you, you gotta mute the board, Mike. Thank you.
Do we have trustee Benz?
I'm here.
Trustee Akas? How about trustee Hunter?
Mike, the uh the board is saying they can't unmute themselves.
I'm I'm on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So trustee Hunter?
Hunter here.
Trustee La French? I see she's gone. And trustee Turner?
Can I mute? Trustee.
Okay, here I am now. Trustee Turner, present.
And trustee Akas?
Let me call her.
She's here.
Okay.
I just asked her to unmute.
Okay.
Trustee Akas? Go ahead, trustee Akas.
I'll see her.
Oh, she's she's still under her phone number. Sorry, let me rename her.
She says she's muted.
I'm unmuted. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you, trustee Akas.
Okay, so um roll call, we have uh five zero. Okay, we convene to open session. Uh the time is nine thirty three P M. There was no um actions taken in closed session. Moving to section fourteen adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion Hunter.
Okay, I'll get the motion by uh uh trustee Hunter and a second by trustee Akas. Um. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hunter?
Hunter, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I, motion pass five zero. The time is nine thirty four P M. We are adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.